... is to reside here in the city of Oceanside. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures, yet one common goal, and that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek your guidance, wisdom and discernment during the deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Lowry, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Kern and Councilmember Feller. Will you grant them peace, wisdom and guidance as I lead our city into a bright and prosperous future? We say all these things in your precious name. Amen. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and please follow after me. Are you guys here for the...
There are Boy Scouts coming.
Do you want to come and do the Pledge of Allegiance? Our Boy Scouts? Would you guys like to join?
No.
You can come on down here with me, it's all good. Just stand right next to me, we're going to do it together, alright? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks so much, you guys. Appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Scott Ashton with the Chamber of Commerce to do the Mayor's Business Spotlight.
Thank you, Mayor Weiss. And again, my name is Scott Ashton, I'm pleased to be here this evening, and we're very, very grateful to be able to recognize Richard Dancy of Flag Keepers as our Oceanside Chamber Business Spotlight Member of the Month. Richard is one of the many people that we have here in Oceanside that retired from the Marine Corps and stayed in the community and started a business, and you may not have met Richard, but you have certainly seen, if you've come to our Operation Appreciation or our enlisted recognition event or many other community events, you've seen his business as he displays the flags through his flag rental business. So, I'll let Richard tell you a little bit about what he does.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We provide custom flag displays for about every venue you can think of, whether it be churches or fundraisers or political events. It's been a real opportunity to meet a lot of people and to also participate in a lot of events that probably wouldn't participate otherwise. But we certainly appreciate the opportunity to offer this business in the Oceanside area.
We just have a plaque of appreciation to present to Richard, and again, we're grateful for all that you do.
I don't see her at this time, Mayor Weiss. We'll move forward to Consent Calendar.
To closed session.
Oh, closed session, so sorry.
Thank you. The council meant earlier in closed session to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving the Oceanside Police Management Association. Council also meant to discuss item 2A1 of the agenda, significant exposure to litigation in the matter of one case, as well as a conference with real estate negotiator involving the portion of El Corazon, APN 16208251, negotiating parties City of Oceanside and Sterling Development under negotiations, price and terms for the exchange of the real property. There's no action under the Brown Act to report in any of those three items.
At this time, we'll have Consent Calendar, items five through fifteen.
Move approval.
No public on these items? Please vote. Motion approved, five zero. Next, we have item number sixteen, which is Quarterly Budget Update and Approval of Budget Adjustments and Transfers.
Honorable Mayor and council members, Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. I'm here tonight to present the Second Quarter Period Ending December 31 Financial Status Report, as well as Budget Adjustments and Transfers. Staff submits the preliminary Second Quarter Financial Status Report and recommends approval of the Second Quarter Budget Adjustments and Transfers. Here is the General Fund revenues. This is common year-to-date to be at thirty-eight percent of the amended budget. Most of our revenues come in in January for property tax, and then also, again, in late June. So at this point, we are within normal range. Preliminary General Fund revenues through September 30th, actually should be December 31st. Property tax is at twenty-nine percent of the budget, which is consistent with the same time prior year. Sales tax is at thirty-six percent, and transient occupancy tax is at fifty percent of budget. Again, we are having great success with our recovery efforts on all our rentals and so forth. General Fund expenditures, we're at fifty-three percent of budget, which fifty percent would be half the year, so there's no concern that people will be over budget at this time. Recommendation: Staff recommends City Council approval of the Second Quarter Budget Adjustments and Transfers. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Any public?
No public on this.
Move approval.
I have a...I just wanted to say there is only thirty days in September.
April, June and November.
And I thought I heard you say September 31st, so that would lead me into the third quarter then.
That's right, thank you very much.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero. Item number seventeen is Direction to Staff to Initiate the Process to Establish an IRS Section 115 Trust to Offset the Rising Costs of the City's CalPERS Pension Obligations and Return to Council for Approval of All Related IRS Section 115 Trust Documents.
There we are. So what do we need to do there?
Here first.
Honorable Mayor and council members, we're here tonight to present the item for the establishment of an IRS Section 115 Trust for the future payment of CalPERS costs.
Honorable Mayor and council members, Rafe Tricky, I'm your City Treasurer. So Staff and City Treasurer recommend the City Council direct staff to initiate the process to establish an IRS Section 115 Trust to offset the ever-rising cost of the City's CalPERS pension obligations and return to council at a later meeting for approval of all related IRS Section 115 Trust documents.
Background: Pension costs will increase eleven point eight million, or fifty-four percent, in the general fund over the next five years. The impact of this is due to PERS lowering the discount rate, lower CalPERS investment returns, and retirees are living longer. And we are facing a potential general fund structural deficit in three years.
Further background related to PERS increases, between fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year 2022-23, general fund CalPERS costs will increase fifty-four percent, or eleven point eight million dollars. Annual general fund CalPERS costs will jump from twenty point four eight million to thirty-one point six million over the next five years, a fifty-four percent increase. Also, the city's unfunded liability has jumped from a hundred and eighty-six million in fiscal year 2016-17 to two hundred and thirty-eight million in fiscal year 2017-18, which represents a twenty-eight percent increase just in that one-year period.
The city has a multi-pronged plan to mitigate the growing employee costs. Here are some of the things that we have done. Employees are paying a higher percentage of their retirement costs. Cities has capped the city contribution rate amount to healthcare. The city's implemented a new classic tier of two percent at sixty versus the existing classic of two point seven at fifty-five. We've implemented modified hiring freeze, eliminated EPMC, and any one-time funds that are used to pay down the unfunded...we're using them to pay down the unfunded liability. We are also prepaying the PERS unfunded liability annual payment early to have significant savings each year. And per City Council Policy 200-13, one-half of the year and surplus, if any, fifty percent of it goes to pay down our debt, which we are choosing to pay down our PERS. Per City Council Policy 200-11, we are also, one-third of our interest is being forwarded to PERS to also pay down that unfunded liability. And finally, amongst many of the things that we're doing, contract services are being used as possible to avoid having additional PERS liability with employees.
So why are we looking at a Section 115 Trust? Well, first, it gives us greater investment security compared to the current return fluctuations that we realize with PERS, maintains this city's oversight and control over investment of trust funds and assets, preserves the city's discretion to withdraw funds from the trust at any time to make PERS payments during rate increases or economic downturns, allows greater investment flexibility compared to restrictions on the general fund investments that we currently operate under, and finally, the trust is irrevocable and designed to pre-fund pension obligations.
Staff and City Treasurer recommend that the City Council direct staff to initiate the process to establish an IRS Section 115 Trust to offset the rising costs of the City's CalPERS pension obligations and return to council for approval of all related IRS Section 115 Trust documents. Thank you, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
No public on this item?
Councilmember Feller.
The question that I have is, have you decided what you're going to put in that account at this point?
We're going to initially put about a million dollars in and slowly build up the balance, depending on funds that are available.
Well, I think that's great work to fend off the actual people that are responsible for paying the dividends on, you know, they've done such a lousy job at making their investments work that this is great for the city to be thinking ahead. We don't want to be Vallejo or San Bernardino or Stockton, so that's a great job.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Staff for giving me the presentations. I had asked a lot of questions. Certainly, the biggest concern that I have is it's definitely has more risk. You know, we basically have our portfolios mostly hardly any risk, right? It's very, very conservative investments and it's per state law. So that is my one concern, is that it is higher risk. But I understand Finance Director and City Manager feel very, you know, feel comfortable with this direction, and yes, we do need to try to raise revenue, especially for this issue. So I am going to support it. It does, it does, you know, I'm sure that in a year or every year, we will be getting some kind of report, and you'll, you know, as time goes on, we'll feel better about this situation, but whenever, you know, because of the past, it certainly gives me pause. But hopefully, this will, things are now in place that this will actually be a bigger benefit. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you. I have a question about who exactly will be monitoring these investments within the city?
The primary oversight will be myself and the City Treasurer's office.
So when you meet with the City Council members individually to report to us, will you add that to the things you report to us very briefly, so we don't have to get into the nuts and bolts, but just how it's going?
Right, we'll give you a recap of performance, so that you know that how it was designed is actually working.
Mm-hmm. That's great. When you met with me a few weeks ago, you explained in great detail that this was still a very conservative position to take, that we're not going into some extremely volatile investments, and that we still intend to keep things very close to the vest, not put it out there.
Right, that is correct, and I misspoke earlier, it's actually ten million we're going to invest initially, so, and we are being very conservative, but even at a conservative level, we hope to make at least three percent return, as opposed to just over one percent that we have now.
And what's the current level of investment, including that ten currently?
Current level of investment in...
For our primary portfolio?
Yeah.
For our primary portfolio, we have approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars invested as of yesterday. Our proposed, we plan to propose to council approval to fund the trust initially with up to ten million dollars by the end of this June, and we have calculated an expected return of three percent, which, as Jane noted, is about triple what we're receiving on the primary portfolio. There is, we plan to propose a risk profile that's extremely conservative, but it will include some equities. That's one of the benefits of going with the IRS Section 115 Trust. California Code allows us, if we have the monies in trust, to invest a certain percent in equities, and the plan that we are looking to propose to you at a later date for your approval would include up to sixteen percent invested in equities, which is very conservative. The rest would be fixed income instruments, but we're not there yet. You would, you would have an opportunity at the later date to approve or amend that proposal.
That's right, thank you. Thank you both for doing this work and presenting it in such a logical manner. Thank you.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero. Next, we're going to item number twenty-two, which is Request by Mayor Weiss to Make Appointments to or Motions for Removal From Some or All of the City's Advisory Groups.
Yeah, you received an updated list this morning for all of the recommendations for the various commissions and committees, and I submit those to you for your consideration and approval.
Second.
Yeah, and no public on this item.
Please vote.
Can I, I have a question. Perhaps City Clerk knows. Did Joanne Toffelis reapply?
I'm so sorry, I didn't.
Did Joanne, for the Arts Commission, did Joanne Toffelis?
I'd have to check with my staff to see if she submitted her application, but I don't have that answer offhand right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we could go grab the applications right now, but I'm not certain if Joanna submitted hers for the Arts Commission.
Okay. Well, I'm concerned about that, so that's the only one.
Please vote.
I'd like to abstain from that one.
Okay, all right. Motion approved, four zero, Sanchez abstain. From the Arts Commission.
Just on the Arts Commission.
Yes. Item number twenty-three is Request by Mayor Weiss and Deputy Mayor Lowry to Adopt a Resolution Opposing Offshore Oil Drilling Along the City's Coastline.
Are there any public on this?
No public on this item.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, we have a resolution, item number twenty-three, and it is involving the proposal of the state, I'm sorry, the federal government to expand offshore oil drilling, and since the city of Oceanside has a beach, and we are connected to that ocean that's beyond the beach, and it seems logical to do something that isn't going to potentially damage the environment in a really huge gross way, like the oil spill off of Santa Barbara in nineteen sixty-nine and the, two years ago, offshore oil platforms in south of Santa Barbara or Fujiho State Park. These are ongoing issues, and we, as the city of Oceanside, are very concerned, so our motion will be to oppose any offshore oil drilling tracts in any outer continental shelf planning area on the Pacific coast in the pending 2019 to 2024 program. So that's basically what we're doing, but the, it's all written out here in two and a half pages, and we've gotten several, I've gotten several direct contacts from people who are concerned about this and the potential for damaging our ocean, which is already suffering, and our beaches, which are constantly being exposed to, you name it, sewage spills that we are really spending a lot of time to focus on, but an oil spill can be highly fatal and clearly toxic. So I don't want to be walking to the beach and have to pick the oil off my feet like I did when I was a little boy growing up here in Oceanside. We've gone past that, and I want to stay past that, so I hope we can pass this. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, thank you. I know that the Coastal Commission is, is, has a position against offshore oil drilling. It certainly would be a huge impact on our environment and our, and our economy. Our, we are a destination tourism economy, and actually, very, very mixed. So this definitely is something that I know the public supports. I will be supporting this as well. Thank you. So if there was a motion, I'll move that we approve this.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
We'll go to item twenty.
Item number twenty is Vance Written Request to Speak. We have three members who wish to speak on off-agenda items. First, we have Greg Cruz, followed by Scott Priest, last, Kelly McCormick.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Greg Cruz, I'm the CEO of USA Surfing. We're the United States Olympic Committee Designated National Governing Body for the Sport of Surfing in the United States, and you may or may not know that surfing will be included in the 2019 Pan American Games in Lima, Peru, as well as the Tokyo 2020 Olympics. I'm here with our coach and local legend Joey Barran, and our, what we are here for is to give you some information on what we'd, what we'd like to do within the city of Oceanside. We'd like to propose running two days during the week of surf team training, including our elite and Olympic teams as we get closer to 2020, similar to what you've approved for El Camino and Oceanside High Schools. And beyond that, we're working on a relationship with Visit Oceanside to make this an official USA Surfing Training Site. So currently, we do a couple, couple days of training a week down at Ocean, I mean, excuse me, a month down at Oceanside Harbor, and we want to get ahead of things and do things by the book, but this team training kind of falls between permitted events and the events that you do at the high schools. So we're here with Dana Higgins from Visit Oceanside, as well as Patrick Young from Events. They both support our, having our training here, and so I'm, I'm here to inform the council that that's what we'd like to continue to do. Thank you for your time.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
So where the Olympic trials are going, are we trying to bring the Olympic trials to Oceanside, or we don't know?
Actually, the IOC, the International Olympic Committee, is meeting with the International Surfing Association, which is our international federation, to determine how countries are going to earn their slots in the Olympics, and how countries can qualify their athletes for those slots. That news will be breaking this week. I was just in Pyeongchang for some meetings during the Winter Olympics, and also, I just got back this morning from Tokyo, so I've been gone a couple of weeks. And all that is being finalized now. There's a couple of summer sports that the process still hasn't been ironed out, that's holding up the announcements. My gut feel is that they're, for the initial year, they're going to go with the, the World Surf League Championship Tour ratings to determine who will, who will get the slots for countries that have athletes at that elite level, but we'll definitely be doing training here with those athletes, if that's the way it turns out. Thank you all.
I'll have the City Manager give you her contact information.
Okay, great, thank you.
Next, we have Scott Priest.
I'm here on behalf of my, my wife, who's a school teacher, our three children who go to school here, one's in elementary, one's in middle school and one's in high school, and as long as my brother and sister-in-law, who are also raising kids here in Oceanside. As we talk together sometimes at Sunday dinner, it's our observation, it matters to teens and children what decisions that adults make around them. I won't even go into the mistakes that adults have made in the last several weeks that have cost children their lives, but we do not think families in Oceanside would be well-served by pot businesses, specifically cultivation, manufacturing or retail in our town. It hardly brings a shine to the name of Oceanside. Professional surfing, on the other hand, Olympic development, that's a good thing. As reported recently in the LA Times and CBS, a leader in the California marijuana industry warned Wednesday that the state pot growers produce eight times the pot that is consumed by people in the state. So I'm wondering why our City Council is even considering pot growers that will only contribute to the excess supply. Where's the glut of pot going to go? It's going to go to the black market, it's going to go to other cities in California that don't permit it, it's going to go to other states where it's illegal and where those citizens don't want it. It is illegal to send pot across state lines, both at the federal and state level, and why would we want to enable illegal activity? I suspect that there would be threats by people with false promises that they won't press for a ballot initiative if the City Council passes their own regulations first. This is a myth. It would take a great deal of money that they don't have. They couldn't muster support for a ballot initiative this year in Imperial Beach, Trulavista, Encinitas or Carlsbad. All those ballot initiatives were withdrawn, and if the chances were that a ballot initiative was granted, the parents of Oceanside would fight it, just like they did in Encinitas, Solana Beach and Del Mar, and won. North County parent groups, PTAs, Scouts, public health agencies and other preventive organizations are large and well-organized. We have pride in our community and want to protect our youth. We will not sell out to the pot industry whose only interest is money. I thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Kelly McCormick, and you are faced with a tremendously important decision about the future of Oceanside. Will you invite commercial pot businesses to set up shop here? Speakers from the pot businesses have said repeatedly their goal is to normalize pot. Theirs is a business model built on addiction, just like Big Tobacco. They even repeat many of the same lies. They say pot is good for you, that it cures everything from stress to cancer. These claims, of course, are not true. In fact, the FDA recently sent a warning letter to numerous companies for their claims that marijuana could treat or cure cancer. In part, the news released from the FDA said, quote, "Selling these unapproved products with unsubstantiated therapeutic claims is not only a violation of the Federal Food, Drug and Cosmetics Act, but also can put patients at risk, as these products have not been proven to be safe or effective." In Canada, Medipod has been legal since 2001. New medical guidelines are now being issued to thirty thousand doctors in Canada. They warn the effects of the drug outweigh any minor benefits for a vast majority of conditions. For other conditions, marijuana was only marginally better than a placebo. There are more than a dozen medical associations in the US that do not support or advocate the use of marijuana. Don't... Don't support the pot industry's false narrative that pot is somehow good for you. What's more, we all know that obtaining a medical marijuana card is easy. A reporter for Rolling Stone wrote recently that she obtained a card by saying she had cramps. I work with teenagers and I'm the parent of two teens. I know for a fact that pot from marijuana storefronts is easy for them to get. Is that what you want for the children and families of Oceanside, to make it even easier to get than it already is? Why become a part of that supply chain? Please have the courage to say no. Despite its reputation in rap music, even the city of Compton has had the courage to say no to the commercial pot businesses. They've seen what it can do to communities and young people. Two ballot initiatives there in Compton failed last month. Similarly, there are people in the pot business who will try to pressure you to do their bidding by threatening an initiative, as if it's a foregone conclusion that they'll win. Please don't be fooled. Initiatives were defeated in Encinitas, Solana Beach, and Del Mar. Don't run for the hills just because someone tells you the sky is falling.
We have three more speakers on this item. Mike Bullock, Michael Odegaard, and Diane Strater. And one more, Dana Corso.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mike Bullock. I work, I live at 1800 Bayberry Drive here in Oceanside. And I want to thank the new mayor for taking on the job, and I want to thank all of you council members for, for doing what you do. It's not very lucrative and it's, it's hard work, and I really appreciate the fact that you're here. And I'm very optimistic about what can happen in the next six months or so with the Climate Action Plan and also with the Coast Highway Alternatives Analysis. So I'm optimistic. I also know a lot about climate change, and so I have to be optimistic, or I wouldn't be here. This is a whereas that was not in that resolution that you passed, and I have to thank you so much for passing that resolution. And I wanted to say something that was a little bit different, and so I say whereas humanity has an anthropogenic climate change crisis. And this isn't too important for this, but it does show that cars and light duty trucks are the primary cause of the problem that we're having. And in terms of climate literacy, therefore, we resolve there's a need for all high school students to know before they graduate and elected officials to know. Acknowledge and address as soon as possible both the existence of and the reason for anthropogenic climate change, its potential for harm, the difference between stabilizing the climate at a livable level and destabilization, science-based climate stabilizing greenhouse gas reduction targets and how those are arrived at and how we might achieve them. And one way to say how bad could it get is that it's really unbounded. Governor Pope, Governor Brown said to the Pope just before the Paris Climate Talks that humanity must reverse course or face extinction, and our governor would not exaggerate to the, to the Pope. In terms of how bad it could get, I can't read all that, but devastating collapse human population, incompatible with human survival, and we must end fossil fuel, the consumption of fossil fuel. Now, I want to put down just a little bit of data here in the time that I have left. This is actually 800,000 years of atmospheric CO2. Some of you don't look that interested in this. This is the ballgame right here. And 800,000 years is a long time. Our species is only 300,000 years old. And you can see that there's a lot of variation, but this right here is anthropogenic. It goes straight up, and therein lies the problem. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's a little bit difficult having to give my presentation in three-minute soundbites, so I'm going to try not to repeat myself, but again, I have to remind you that we were excluded systematically from the planning process on the Vine Street collection. So I'm now stuck in a position where I have to present information that should have been provided in the process now in three-minute soundbites. I asked for a place on the agenda, and I think considering the gravity of the situation we're facing right now, I think it deserves an agenda place, and we need time to talk about the situation. Right now, we're in mourning. Our neighborhood is in mourning. They fenced off the playfield, and we've lost several tenants already. We don't want a neighborhood that does not welcome children or elderly people, but as I said at the last meeting, what you're designing in our Canyon Park area is a neighborhood that's already deficit of play area. We're talking about a residential neighborhood that's mostly apartment buildings, that have no backyards. And yet somehow, the planning staff didn't allow that information to come through in the process. And I do need more time to give a complete presentation of what I think were some of the problems in the processing of this. And I also have some recommendations on how to increase transparency and prevent the opportunity to be defrauded in this process. I'll wait till they come back and sit. Well, again, I'm going to repeat that I believe that we have a, we had a conflict of interest. We need to maintain the same disclosure standards for all levels of staff in our city government, not just one year for council members and two years or three years for other staff. I think that council members should be held to the same standards that everyone else is held to. And so I'm out of time, so I'm going to, again, request inclusion on the agenda so that we can give this more time than it deserves. Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Strater.
My name is Diane Strater, and I live in the East Side. Thank you to the mayor and the members of the council for allowing me to speak. I would like to address my remarks to Deputy Mayor Lowry. I just want to say what a disappointment you are to me. During your campaign, you stated you wanted to be a man for the people, a man to represent the people. You had a chance, when you heard speaker after speaker after speaker state that they wanted the opportunity to vote on our next mayor. I don't have any objection with mayor-wise, but I'm just saying, we wanted the right to vote. In this country, the land of the free and the home of the brave, I think the people should be able to vote on anything that is as important as a mayor and that had almost a full term to fulfill. You had a chance to show bravery, but you chose cowardice. You had a chance for greatness, but you chose mediocrity. You had a chance to be a hero, but you chose your own arrogance. Again, I want to say what a disappointment you are to me, and I am saddened that a man of the people could not give the people the right to vote. And a man of the people means something radically different to me than it does to you, and I am so sad about that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dana Corso.
My name is Dana Corso, and I'm the president of ACTION, which stands for the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods. ACTION is a grassroots coalition of the neighborhoods that was formed because our city council majority was consistently ignoring the citizens of Oceanside. ACTION led the fight to defeat Proposition E and F alongside Omaha and GSMOL and many concerned citizens. Proposition E and F threatened the homes of our seniors, veterans, and families on fixed incomes in Oceanside Manufacturers' homes and mobile home parks. I am here today to speak on another very important initiative, the Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources, also known as SOAR. SOAR is an effort to maintain irreplaceable resources that has significant value to our community. As you all know, Oceanside is very diversified. We have our beautiful beach and harbor, the valley, a wide range of neighborhoods, including mine, Jeffrey's Ranch, where I can keep two horses on my property, and we have bridle paths instead of sidewalks, South Morrel Hills, which has been zoned two and a half acres per dwelling for decades. The reason it's been zoned two and a half acres per dwelling is to protect agricultural land, farming, and open space, to protect the wildlife corridor, clean air, and to reduce traffic congestion. Unfortunately, we have three council members, Mr. Kern, Mr. Feller, and Mr. Lowry, that have disregarded the city staff, the city planners, the planning commission, and the community. Here's a list of all the SOAR supporters that are endorsed, that have endorsed SOAR, including the League of Women Voters, Sierra Club, Friends of Alcorizo, ACTION, there's a whole group, you can all read them there. For three councilmen to disregard the city and the community and to support the changing of the zoning to high-density housing in South Morrel Hills is shameful. Converting commercial land to high-density residential to only benefit three councilmen and one out-of-town developer is plain and simple, money and greed. This attempt to change the general plan and zoning to accommodate your financial campaign contributors is inexcusable. Oceanside voters are much smarter than that. Mr. Kern and Mr. Lowry, you are spinning the facts publicly, and it's disgusting that you have sunk to such a level. The oath that you took, you swore to serve and protect the community, not an out-of-town developer. The good news is, we have the opportunity, this November, to vote both Lowry and Mr. Kern out of Oceanside. In addition, I would like to propose term limits. ACTION held a debate in 2016, whereas Councilmember Sanchez and Councilmember Feller agreed to term limits. I think now is the perfect time to implement that. We have approximately two weeks left to gather signatures needed to qualify for SOAR for the November's ballot. I encourage anybody and everybody that's interested to go to the SOAR website, oceansidesor.org, and get involved. You're also invited to the next ACTION meeting, which will be held on March 11. And there's the address. Thank you very much.
Our next, our next two speakers are Michael Feinstein and Mike Milano.
Good evening, I'm Michael Feinstein. I'm a former mayor and city council member in Santa Monica, co-founder of the Green Party of California, and a 2018 candidate for Secretary of State. I'm here to present an idea to you that would empower your residents and your city with more representation in Sacramento, and that's how we elect the state legislature. Currently, California has the worst per capita representation in the United States. The size of our legislature was set in 1879, when our population was only 865,000 people. Today, we have a million people per state senate district, and if we had carried forward that same ratio from 1879, the size of the legislature would be 5,000 people. Now, I believe that the diversity of California needs to be reflected in our legislature, and to do that, I'm recommending a 500-seat unicameral state legislature with half of the seats elected from much smaller, single-seat districts by ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting is where you can rank your choices. If your first choice doesn't win, your vote goes to your second or third choice until somebody gets a majority. That's what they use in Oakland and San Francisco. And then the other half would be elected in regional, multi-winner, multi-county legislative districts by proportional representation. Proportional representation is what we're familiar with in Europe, where people who have a given perspective elect representatives in proportion to that perspective. So if 20% of the people have a given perspective, they elect 20% of the seats. How that relates to your city is I'm suggesting a San Diego border region of San Diego County and Imperial County, where there'd be 22 individual, single-seat districts and 22 seats elected at large. We are the sixth-largest economy in the world, we're a nation-state and also a state of regions, but the only place that a regional perspective comes into our state legislature currently for your city is through your involvement in Sandag. And then Sandag has to go ahead and lobby the state legislature. But the reality is that the people of your city and the people of this larger region don't have an opportunity to have a regional public policy debate. You think about your RENA numbers, your Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, the people in your community don't get to debate that openly within the context of informing people to go to the state legislature. So this sort of plan would, of course, need to go onto the ballot, and I know you can't give direction tonight because this is a non-agendized item, but I hope you consider giving direction to your staff at a future date to look at this concept, to talk to your state representatives, and hopefully put it on the ballot so that all Californians can have more representation, because if you don't have a seat at the table of the democracy, you're on the menu. And too many people are on the menu in politics in our state. Thank you very much.
Michael Milano, 442 Earnest Court, Oceanside. You know, I just kind of thought tonight, you guys have to have really thick skins to sit up there, so I appreciate you listening to, you know, everybody speak and speak their mind, but what a, what a rough job you guys have. Anyways, hey, you know what? SOAR, buy our land in Morrel Hills if you want to decide what to do with it. It's our land, it's not public land, it's not open space, it's commercial agricultural land that we own. So a lot of miscommunication out there relative to that initiative. We're against it and will continue to oppose people imposing their will on the land that we own. Relative to cannabis, we want to farm cannabis in Morrel Hills. Commercial growers, it's an agricultural crop in the state of California. If you want to keep your kids off of drugs, amazon.com, you buy tests. I test my teens every month, gives them a reason to say no to their friends. It's very simple, it's very effective. Thank you, guys.
No further public on this item. However, I will mention that Gina Thomas did arrive, so at this time, Gina Thomas, you can speak about the Ironman.
Do we have the PowerPoint? Thank you. I'm Gina Thomas, I'm the race director for the Ironman 70.3 Oceanside. This will be the 16th event of the city of Oceanside hosting it. Race day this year is Saturday, April 17th, I'm sorry, April 7th. It consists of a one-mile swim in the harbor and a 56-mile bike ride through Camp Pendleton and San Clemente State Parks, and a 13-mile run along the coast of Oceanside with the finish line at the pier. Currently, we have sold out within an hour and a half of opening this event last July. We have 30 qualifying age grouper slots for the 70.3 World Championships that are going to be held in Nelson Mandela Bay this year. Our winners last year, we have two-time Lionel Sanders and Holly Lawrence will be coming back to the field, and there's a $50,000 purse for the pro athletes with that. From our surveys last year, 70.3% said they would attend this event this year. 93.2% 93.2% said they'd recommend this event to a friend. A lot of the comments we got from the survey said, "I really love the Oceanside venue, such a cool place and the course rocks as do all the people. Beautiful course, finish line experience is awesome." The exciting news is, we had a survey overall with all the 70.3s globally and Ironman, and Ironman 70.3 Oceanside Run Course tied for fifth place overall globally as the best run course, so very excited about that. Also too, we currently have 3,511 athletes registered for this event, and that includes our Ironman Foundation entries, which puts money back towards our nonprofits and into the community, and our Challenge Athlete, Foundation athletes. Again, over 84% of the field is traveling from Japan, Germany, Brazil, Australia, France, Thailand, Ireland, Finland, China, Philippines and even Abu Dhabi. I hope I said that right. What's new for this race is we decided that we're going to put the ocean back into Oceanside, so we're going to have a beach start this year. This is the first time that we've attempted this, and we are hoping that the waves cooperate and don't get any bigger than three and a half feet, and we're excited to be doing that. We'll also have the 7th Annual Iron Kids Race, Friday, April 6 at 5:00 p.m. And this year will be the second year of our SoCal Challenge. So this is one of two races that the athletes will complete, and at the Super Frog Race that is held in September down in Imperial Beach, if they've done both races, they will actually get a third medal of the SoCal Challenge. We did it on the fly last year and the response from it was really positive, so we wanted to keep that moving. About the Ironman Foundation slots that the athletes do, they've, we've donated over, since I've been with Ironman since 2005, Ironman Foundation has granted over $215,000 back into the community of Oceanside, to the nonprofits, to the military units that help volunteer. This year, Ironman Foundation is donating $25,500 towards those nonprofits, plus they're going to have an activity, the Adaptive Surf Clinic, partnering with Challenge Athlete Foundations on Sunday, the day after the race, April 8. So with that, I am just very excited for this event. This is a passion for me, I have a passion for my city, I have a passion for introducing athletes that are traveling here to experience our town, to experience our local flavor, get to know our locals and just even my own little stomping grounds where I like to eat. And each and every year, working with Visit Oceanside and working with the lifeguards and OPD, it's, this is home to me and it just really solidifies that I am exactly where I need to be and why I love what I do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Too bad you're sold out, otherwise I would have paid for Jack Feller's entry fee, so...
One of these days. I am bummed because Mayor Weiss has done this many, many years, and this will be the first year in a while that he has not done this event, so.
He is.
He's going to be the one that shoots the gun off to start it.
Too many responsibilities now to...
Next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will adjourn until 6 o'clock.
Item 18? Yes, item 18 is adoption of a resolution updating the city's junior lifeguard program fees by $20 from $310 to $330 per session, effective March 1, 2018, and approval of the addition of two hourly extra-help beach lifeguard II positions to assist with the program.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I'll start with me.
Yeah. Staff.
Staff.
Yeah.
Staff.
No public content.
Staff only.
All material has been provided to the council.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Bill Curtis, Lifeguard Captain, Oceanside Beach Lifeguards. Staff's recommendation for the city council will be to adopt this resolution. Lifeguard program fees by $20 from $310 to $330 per session. A little bit of the background off the staff report would be that the Oceanside Junior Lifeguard Program is a summer youth beach program, run by the Oceanside Fire Department Lifeguard Division. This program is for children between the ages of nine and 17 and teaches beach and ocean safety for more than 720 participants. This program has sold out in less than 30 days each of the last three years. Our goal is try to do it in less than a day like the Ironman, but that's not going to happen. The analysis on this is the junior lifeguard program last raised fees in 2009. This is when we moved over and underneath the fire department from the Harbor District. We weren't in the fee structure at that time, so this resolution would bring us into the fee structure. Since that time, supplies, employee costs have increased. The increase in fees will provide the needed funds to cover the operating costs for this popular program. In addition, staff is planning on expanding the program from 720 to 800 students, which will provide more opportunity for the youth in the community to participate, excuse me. The additional 80 students will require additional staff support, so $7,000 of those fees that we're going to increase will fund two hourly extra-help beach lifeguard II positions, which will require to maintain an adequate level of supervision. And I'm here for any questions, if you have.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time. Mayor Weiss, I see none.
Close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, this is a very popular program. I want to say kudos to our lifeguards back in the back. I hope that the cameras can see you, thank you so much for everything you do, everything including saving lives, right? So this is, there's been no increase for nine years, so, and this is completely, completely cost neutral, so, and the goal of having more kids involved is a wonderful goal. Happy to move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. With these kind of programs in the city, do you often have requests for scholarships in this program, or is this just because it fills up so well?
Actually, Mayor and councilmembers, this, just this last year, we offered 23 families scholarships through the program. That scholarship included up to $150 to help fund that family member to be in the program. This was in cooperation with the Parks and Recs. So yes, we do have scholarships that do help the kids that want to be in the programs, that want to learn from Oceanside, so the scholarships are available, yes.
Well, I appreciate that and, you know, I know that the community will probably be checking on that in a few instances, but I have pictures of my youngest daughter and, you know, a couple of other young gals that she grew up with in that program, and it spurns kids, I mean, she has seven kids, so maybe it will make more for the lifeguard program. Anyway, thanks.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment, you know, this is a great program for us, the idea that, you know, bringing this on. You didn't need to bring all the support staff here, you did a pretty good job of presenting it all on your own. I was just waiting for the guys to rake out and wave back there just to cheer you on. So anyway, but thank you, I'll support that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
Item number 19 is adoption of resolutions to adjust development processing fees related to the development review, construction and inspection process for planning, engineering, building and adoption. Have a resolution to establish development processing fees related to the development review, construction and inspection process, water utility hydraulic modeling and meter exchange for the Water Utilities Department.
Open the public hearing.
Staff. Staff only.
Staff only.
Staff only.
No public comment, communications. All material has been provided to the council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Megan Crooks with the Development Services Department, and I'm happy to be here this evening to present this presentation for development-related processing fee adjustments. And the presentation, as well as the analysis for the fees, was put together in collaboration with the Water Utilities Department, and Ms. Shoshana Aguilar took a great part in that. Staff recommends, city council adopt resolutions to adjust development processing fees related to the development review, construction and inspection process for planning, engineering and building, and adopt a resolution to establish development processing fees related to the development review, construction and inspection process, water utility hydraulic modeling and meter exchange fees for the Water Utilities Department. In May 2011, the city council approved a new fee structure based on the Matrix Fee Study. Since then, the Development Services Fee Adjustments have been made in 2013, 2015, 2016 and 2017. New construction fire prevention fees were updated along with the building fees in 2016 and again adjusted in 2017. In 2018, there are no adjustments to fire prevention development-related fees. Water Utilities has recovered costs for its review of planning discretionary applications, but has not collected fees for services related to land development or building-related services. The current fee schedules have a bottom-up cost analysis approach that was derived from the 2010 Matrix Study. Developer deposits are time and materials, and those were established in 2013 primarily for the planning division but have since evolved into some of the engineering projects. For 2018, planning, engineering and building require some adjustments and some additional deposits. Development-related water utilities fees are being implemented to begin a cost recovery approach. And the water utilities fees will be updated annually using the Consumer Price Index to incrementally move toward a full cost recovery. Fees should cover the cost of providing development-related services to ensure that general tax dollars are reserved for general tax, public service purposes, and that utility revenues are for utility services. For the 2018 fee adjustments, the specific fee amounts are listed within the staff report. Planning fee adjustments will include the substantial conformity and developers' conference applications to improve cost recovery. Engineering fee adjustments will include stormwater flat fees, changing over to the deposits as time and materials. Adding deposits to force submittal plan checks and to inspections in the engineering division for plan checks that are going beyond the third submittals that our current flat fees cover. The building fee adjustments are adding square footage tiers to building plan check and inspections for residential additions and remodels to improve cost recovery. The water utilities development fee additions, those are for cost recovery of services provided through development review. Plan review and inspections of engineering grading and improvement plans are conducted by the Water Utilities Department, as well as plan review of building plans. Development services that are specific to the Water Utilities Department are solid waste review, hydraulic modeling and meter exchanges. These fee recommendations were provided to the Building Industry Association in early January. After a few clarifying questions were answered with them, we have not had any further questions from the BIA. The fiscal impact for increasing or adjusting these fees or adding fees, for the remainder of this year, once the fees become effective on May 1, Development Services could see a potential $21,000 added to their revenue, Water Utilities $47,000. Annually thereafter, we predict that Development Services would increase by $126,000 approximately, and Water Utilities by approximately $285,000. With that, the recommendation this evening is staff recommending that city council adopt resolutions to adjust development processing fees related to the development review, construction and inspection process for planning, engineering and building, and to adopt a resolution to establish development processing fees related to the development review, construction, inspection process, water utility hydraulic modeling and meter exchange for the Water Utilities Department. Ms. Aguilar and myself will be available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time. Mayor Weiss, I see none.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. It has been, what, seven years since the last time that we reviewed Development Services' processing fees, so this is a good thing to do. And as the staff indicated in its report, full recovery is highly beneficial. That's what this is hoping to do, is be as net neutral as possible. Costs go up and costs ought to be borne by the projects themselves. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you. Excuse me, move adoption.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have, and I'll second the motion, I think we do, you know, some of these are reasonable adjustments. I'm just concerned that if we go to this model, what's our incentive to contain cost? If it's just easy for us to say, okay, well, it costs us as much, we'll just pass it along. How do we incentivize ourselves to keep those costs under control? And Jonathan, it looks like you're grabbing your mic, so I guess you're going to be answering the question.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Weiss and members of the council, I would say on the Development Services end, one thing that we've talked about doing is actually improving upon some of the handouts that we pass on to the development community to help steer them through the process to make their experience with our department more efficient. In other words, if we can give them tips in terms of how to expedite their plan check process or do's and don'ts to ensure a smooth process, that would be one probably big example of something that we plan on doing as part of this effort in order to ensure that we still get people in and out as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, because, you know, in the middle of a project, I've never had a developer complain about the fees. They always complain about the time, so the idea of getting through, because their carrying costs are probably going to be more than some of the fees, so to get it through the system. And then, you know, and I always thought that the Developers Conference was way underpriced. You know, 200 bucks for, to have the number of people in the room for that period of time to review a project, so I still, I think to tell developers out there, that Developers Conference for 330 bucks is still, will save you probably thousands at the end of the project. So to incentivize them to come in early and get all the plans and get everybody's input before you get, go down the road, so. I just want to, I'm always concerned when government says a full cost recovery about how we're going to contain those costs that we just passed along, but I do support all these. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you, Mayor Weiss. Can you explain to me that this is just about commercial, industrial, new construction? It's not going to be impacting directly any of our existing homes, residents?
Deputy Mayor Lowry, Mayor Weiss and city councilmembers, the, there are a few fees that would apply to residential permits and residential applications. The substantial conformities, or if somebody were to remodel or build their own single-family home, these fees would still apply to them, but they're a much smaller project and the fees are adjusted according to project sizes, so the fees aren't quite as large on the residential side as they are for larger commercial developments or large residential.
So unless someone who, I'm just going to talk about a single-family home, a person has a single-family home and they want to do a bathroom addition, they will have some small impact as a result of this. small impact as a result of this, possibly, not necessarily.
Possibly, yes, that's correct. If it's small enough, some of our square footage tiers that we added would apply to much larger remodels and additions when people are adding a whole new floor level to their home. But a small bathroom remodel is probably still going to fall within our current fee structures. And that's how it would apply on the Development Services side.
So when we keep talking about cost recovery, when I met with you a few, couple of weeks ago, I asked you about the same item that Councilmember Kern mentioned, which was the developer meetings, or whatever those are called, where you meet with the people who are bringing in projects, to discuss that with them. And we are still in the process of getting to the point where we recover full value. We're still not recovering our actual costs to do some of these meetings or evaluations of projects. So this is just a step in the right direction to recover what it's actually costing us. People are very upset about how much money the city spends on projects that we don't get any money for. It's just a, we just get some money, it's not enough money. And that's what I hear routinely from people in the public. They're concerned about how much it costs the city to do a project. And that's something that we all, as a council, probably share also. So I think it's important to continue in the direction of recovering what really costs us to do the work that we're doing when it's something that's being purchased. So I want to thank you for putting this together and appreciate meeting with you a few days ago. Thank you.
Councilman Feller.
Thank you. I told you I wasn't going to ask anything, but I do, we've talked now about what's going to be the way city staff justifies the costs. And what, you just talked about a small remodel, and how many of those are going to go on because our costs are too high? And just go on anyway with unlicensed contractors, what have you? Are those kinds of things something that are preventable? Are we, are we going to get out of range as far as costs to have this kind of go underground?
Honorable Mayor Weiss and City Council, also on the Development Services side, generally, the only time that someone is going to feel the impact of the increased fees on a residential addition is once you get about over a 1,000-square-foot addition, which is fairly sizable. Most additions fall, I would say a large majority of, or room additions fall way under that threshold. Typically, it's a room, or a bathroom, or a kitchen, or something of that sort. So I would say generally, the number that we would be capturing on those larger remodels is fairly small. We do believe that with the complexity of some of those additions, we aren't, we're falling way short of capturing the time that needs to go into the review of those plans because oftentimes, they require special engineering and so forth. As Megan mentioned, that can oftentimes involve a second-story room addition. So I guess it's a long-winded way of saying we don't think it's really going to impact the vast majority of remodels and additions that we do see in the city currently. And we would certainly be mindful of our costs moving forward.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Are there any other general council member comments? Seeing none, then we will adjourn this meeting until 3:30 on Wednesday, March 14.